Keep your powder dry.
Yeah, I guess so.
That's right.
Tick tock, tick tock, tick tock, tick tock. I've got thirty seconds and twenty-nine, twenty-eight. Let's go.
I have seven.
Good evening, everybody, and welcome this evening to our town council meeting. We're going to begin with a public hearing concerning the traffic block ordinance. I believe Deputy Chief, are you going to make a presentation on that? Very good. If you could come, that would be terrific.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Public Act 09171 allows for a municipality by ordinance to create an ordinance that'll allow us to designate certain areas in town which will stop vehicular traffic from blocking intersections. So the public act with that and the ordinance before you today basically has special requirements where you have to have signage which is there, do not block the box subject to fine, which is the actual size of the sign. We have to have the boundaries which you see inside the box there have to be into the intersection and painted white with no less than one foot specifically designed for Town of Southington roads. If it intersects with a state road or if it feeds into a state road, we would have to look at the proposed area, make a determination, then Chief Daley, who's the traffic authority, would make a recommendation to the state DOT, and then they would make a decision on whether or not it would be approved or not. Under the enforcement, Connecticut General Statute 14250B allows us to enforce it, which is a $92 payable infraction ticket. So that's really the ordinance in a nutshell.
Before we hear from the public, does anyone from the council have any questions for the chief on the ordinance? Thank you, Chief. Right now, I'm going to open it up to the public. Anyone speaking for the ordinance as outlined by Chief Palmeri? Speaking in favor of the ordinance? Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Pamela J. DePaolo. I live at 54 Delahuntie Drive in Southington, and I'm president of DePaolo Furniture on Center Street. The proposal to solve the problem of drivers blocking major intersections in town has been made none too soon. I observe on a daily basis as I drive around for business appointments and routine trips to various businesses in all the busiest parts of town that most intersections which can be blocked are blocked by inconsiderate drivers. There needs to be an intervention by means of creating no-block zones and, if possible, cameras as, you know, it is possible to do that, to deter these drivers and create new enforceable road laws, which I believe is absolutely necessary at this point in time. Our very busy roads are at their breaking point with thousands of vehicles everywhere traveling in all directions and daily accidents that I personally see and observe or hear about on a daily basis because of poor driving habits, tailgating, cellphone use by drivers, and just plain carelessness. Drivers no longer, out of common courtesy, stop at a green light ahead of them when they see a vehicle directly ahead of them. I do stop because I remember somehow from driving school years ago that you're supposed to stop when you see traffic ahead at a green light. Apparently, no one is observing this anymore. So the areas of concern that I have seen that are very serious are, and the worst one is at High Street getting onto Route 10 where you have Merrill Avenue across from you. So that's one of the worst areas. Actually, Center Street also because people trying to get out of Ricky Way. I notice if I'm heading south on Route 10 and I have a green light there, and of course there's always traffic ahead of you. So I usually just stop at the green light because people can't get out of Ricky Way. And those are two of the worst areas. The other areas are at the Mill Street intersection with Route 10, and of course, the intersection right here also is another area. At Hobart Street is just notorious. So I think because our roads are so narrow, and they really weren't built to handle all this traffic, as we all know, so there really needs to be something done, and it's none too soon. So please do this ordinance and please make it a law and enforceable and give out tickets if you have to. People need to be more considerate at those intersections, and if they can't do it on their own, by their own common courtesy, then the law's gonna have to get involved. Thank you.
Thank you, Pam. Anyone else speaking in favor? Is there anyone speaking opposed to this ordinance? I received a letter this afternoon from a person who wants me to read it into the record, and I'm reading it into the record, but also the town clerk already has a copy of it. It says, "Good evening. My name is Steve Kalkowski, and I live at 27 Brightwood Lane in Southington. I am also a member of the Southington Police Commission. I am here tonight to talk about the proposed ordinance to establish a box in the roadway at the entrance of several area businesses so that the entrances will not be encumbered by traffic blocking the entrance. I believe that this proposal or proposed ordinance came about once Plan B decided to move into the property at the corner of Spring and Queen. I want to state up front that I am very supportive of this proposed ordinance as it is important to support our businesses and communities, our business communities where we can and where it makes sense. However, I am disappointed that we are allowing Plan B to open before we have a right-turn lane installed on Spring Street, which we all know is sorely needed. Our citizens will now experience even more traffic issues with Plan B opening, and if we approve the ordinance before having that right-lane turn installed, it will be further cause for delays for vehicles trying to get onto Queen Street and turning right. I was a member of the Planning and Zoning Commission, and we approved the BJ's application, and we were very clear that this right-turn lane must be installed by the next applicant on Spring Street, which would now be Plan B. Several of our counselors were on planning and zoning back then and should remember this discussion on the record during our meetings for BJ's, as should Mark Shoda, who was there as town attorney at that time. The former Bertucci's property was sitting empty for many months and would have been a perfect opportunity to install the right turn before another business moved in. I am also concerned with how this ordinance will be enforced by our police department. Imagine a patrol officer seeing a vehicle in the box in front of Plan B bumper-to-bumper traffic from BJ's to Queen Street. It will be virtually impossible to make that stop and issue an infraction. While enforcing this ordinance will add more responsibilities to our patrol officers, this will also take them away from more critical traffic enforcement like vehicles driving through red lights or stop signs, vehicles passing school buses, looking for distracted drivers, or drivers under the influence. There will be a need for more officers. As I stated previously, I am very supportive of this ordinance, but it would make it a conditional approval based on the installation of the right-turn lane, which would give both the town and Plan B the right sense of urgency to getting this done. Our citizens have been impacted long enough on Spring Street, and it's time to do the right thing for us, too. Thank you very much for the opportunity to speak to you this evening." Thank you. Madam Clerk, you have a copy of this, is that correct? We'll enter it into the record. Back to the council. Council, do you have any other statements or anything that you would like to talk about concerning this ordinance? Yes, Val?
No, Chair, I just, then I guess just listening to that correspondence from Mr. Kalkowski, if the box is critical and enforcement is an issue, can we hear maybe from Chief Palmeri as far as how, what do they feel about the enforcement?
Thank you.
You know, I mean, I think if it's critical for the businesses and we want to proceed in that manner, then it'll be, you know, it's going to be enforceable, but do they see that as something that they can enforce if there's a lot of traffic there and...
Thank you. I think we'll bring Chief up, but just one second, though, Chief, if you can just hang on. Chris, you had your hand up.
I'm just wondering, the language, "do not block the box," is there a way, is that, do we have to call it that? A layperson may not realize the box is an intersection. Can we, could we phrase it that it's, you know, intersections, just to change the language a little bit, or does it have to be? I don't know if that's something specific that it must be part of the statute or...
Yeah. That's a good question. Chris, do you have something I see looming in?
Yeah, just two questions on enforcement. Like in snowy weather, when there's white snow and stuff on the ground, clearly our roads are plowed nicely, but sometimes the white might blend in. How's that enforced? Does that change the enforcement? And I'd be curious about like electronic, like a camera that like doesn't require an officer, but an electronic enforcement device. I know they exist. I've been traveling through other towns where there's like a red light camera where if you run the red light, it knows and it sends you a ticket automatically. Be curious if that's been considered as well for enforcement.
Okay, before we go to the chief, Mark, is there anything you want to add in all of this?
No, actually, the purpose of this has been going on for a longer period of time than even Plan B. Steve is right, except for one aspect of it. Plan B's not the responsible party. It was gonna be the second pad that was gonna be put at, I'm telling the guy who was chaired at the time. There's the second pad that goes on BJ's would have been the triggering standpoint. Perfectly honest with you, the town can't wait that long at this point. The pad isn't being done. So we began, myself, the prior town attorney, the prior assistant town attorney, began negotiations with Plan B immediately, and they have, without any cost to the town, given us all the easements necessary to put this lane in. As you know, I don't talk about my budget, but you'll see in my budget for the funds to do this next spring and summer. So this is gonna be done relatively quickly, but it would not have been done without the Plan B giving us at no cost all the easements.
That's terrific. Chief, now, if you could come on up and maybe answer.
Madam Chair? Chairwoman, I'm sorry. Could I just, I just want to make some clarification there. First, the statute does require a sign and the painting on the ground, so I believe maybe that answers the question if there is snow. That's why they require the sign to be there as well. So you can't do one without the other, so they have to have both. We might be able to change the wording based on the statute. I don't think you have to use "box" on there, but it has to say "do not block." Maybe you could put "do not block intersection." I would have to take a look at that, but I do know the requirements are for both, as well as the timing. We have to publicize this ordinance in the paper, so any enforcement wouldn't take in place till after, 20 days after that notice as well. So that gives a little time for the public to get used to what it's gonna say and what the ordinance actually is. So maybe that helps a little bit for Deputy Chief when he comes up.
Thank you, Attorney Taylor. Appreciate it. Deputy Chief Palmeri, please.
As far as the language goes for the ordinance, blocking the box is a standard statute, so it's like an accepted language, so we could look at changing it. But as far as the enforcement goes, our plan all along is even if the ordinance is approved and it goes into 20 days after it's in effect, what we would do is like we always do, we do some work with the newspapers, we start an educational campaign, we do written warnings, and then if we have to go to enforcement, we would. As far as, you know, enforcement, you know, we deal with the changes in laws all the time. Our officers are busy, they do a great job, but if this ordinance is on the books, then we'll do what we can to work with the town like we always do. We pride ourselves on being a full-service department. But just from an understanding perspective, on day 21, our officers are not gonna go out and stop writing tickets. That's not good for the community, that's not how we do business. We believe you educate, you raise awareness, and then if we have to, we enforce. It's no different than when we were all raised, you know? We got punished, and then it got worse if we didn't behave. So, you know, and as far as like the winter goes, the councilman has a good point, but that's where some discretion comes in. We would look at the road, but I think by the time winter comes, people will have a good grasp on what's supposed to be. This is just common courtesy. You know, we could also argue that with the block in the box, we might reduce some traffic accidents, so it could be a trade-off. You know, it's gonna help facilitate traffic, but it's hard to say or quantify we're gonna have more work or less work, but you know, as with any change, whether the state changes and mandates is something we have to do it. So we'll work with the community like we always do.
Thank you so much. And just to restate what you said, Mark, the lane, the turning lane, the right turning lane is already in the works, and you anticipate it will be done?
From my standpoint, from a financial standpoint, assuming the Board of Finance and the town council move forward with that part of it, that would happen in the spring. The only thing that can hold us up a little bit would be the state needs to approve, if there's any signalization change, the state would need to approve that, so we couldn't start until they gave us the okay.
Okay, very good.
But Keith Hayden has already been discussing the matter with the state.
Are we all right? Yes, go ahead.
Madam Chair, just for clarification, you mean this spring? Thank you.
Yeah, it's in the, for the new members, there's a section in my budget called Budget Relocation, and that money becomes available in May.
Very good. I think that was very informative. Thank you so much, everybody. I'm going to close the public hearing right now, and we're going to open up our regular scheduled meeting. Madam Clerk, would you call the roll, please?
William Diedzik.
Here.
Tom Lombardi.
Here.
James Morelli.
Here.
Christopher Palmeri.
Here.
Christopher Pulis.
Here.
Paul Chaplinsky.
Here.
Michael Del Santo.
Present.
Valerie DePaolo.
Here.
Victoria Triano.
Here. Would you all stand for the prayer, please?
Heavenly Father, tonight we pray for direction and courage. We need your help to define our path and courage to walk it. We ask for your continued blessing upon Southington and her people. Amen.
Amen. And with the roomful of heroes, I would ask Kiltonic Post 72 to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you so much, fellas. Right now, I'm going to ask the members of Kiltonic Post to come forward, please.
Madam Chair, I'm sorry. Minutes, please.
I'm sorry, oh, the minutes, excuse me. So you can start. We're gonna approve the minutes. Can I have a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes.
Thank you, Chris, a second, a second by Valerie. Thank you very much. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or?
Abstain.
We've got two abstentions here, and that's that. Please, fellas, come on forward. Let's move our chairs back and back, everybody. Gentlemen, please come up on the dais, please. We'll squeeze in, we'll be comfortable.
You guys can go somewhere.
Are we okay with where the flags are standing? Please help us if it's not right.
It's so great to see you.
It's a pleasure to see you.
How are you? You, too?
Norm is receiving the product. Come on in, fellas. One of the pictures of you, man, we'll get really close together. I want to also mention that, fellas. I want to also mention that I received a letter from John DiMello today saying that he could not be with us. He is on the Veterans Committee that was established last term by Chris Palmeri, and he extended his warmest congratulations and he, on behalf of the entire Veterans Committee, to the Kiltonic Post. And so, let me just read this.
I'm right here.
Oh, good.
Town Council Official Proclamation. Be it hereby known that to all that the Southington Town Council hereby offers its sincerest congratulations to American Legion Kiltonic Post 75 100th Anniversary. In recognition, the celebration of their 100th anniversary, the American Legion was chartered and incorporated by Congress in 1919 as a patriotic veterans organization devoted to mutual helpfulness and in the nation's largest veterans service organization, committed to mentoring and sponsorship of youth programs in our communities, advocating patriotism and honor, promoting a strong national security, and continued devotion to our fellow service members and veterans. And the American Legion's success depends entirely on active membership, participation, volunteerism, and the organization belongs to the people it serves and to the communities in which it thrives. Now therefore, I, Victoria Triano, Chairwoman of the Southington Town Council, on behalf of the entire town council, extend our congratulations to American Legion Kiltonic Post 75 in celebration of their 100th anniversary given this 10th day of February 2020, Town of Southington, State of Connecticut, and it's signed by me. I wanted to say congratulations. Thank you, Shoda, from my heart, from my heart. And as I said, we are surrounded by heroes at this moment, and each one of these guys have served not only their country, but this community with all of the programs that are being done through Kiltonic Post 75, all of the public outreach and support of veterans everywhere in town. And they still are looking, if you know of that, and they need a little help, give them a call. Give our Veterans Committee here a call right here at the town hall. We want our vets to be cared for and appreciated, and I'm just so happy that all of you are here. Don't you, Chris is going, everybody's going, yeah, yeah, yeah. Congratulations, please. Is there something you would like to say?
No, just other than, thank you so very much. We really, really appreciate it. We appreciate the cooperation that we have with the town and the different organizations that we deal with. So again, thank you.
It's our pleasure. Thank you so much. Thank you, guys. That was for taking a minute, and then we're gonna continue. Thank you so much. Very good. Norm, give me that thing. It's 72. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen, and thank you, council members, thank you, Town of Southington, thank you, Kiltonic Post 72, not 75, 72. We are, please get your chairs, everybody, let's go. It is a night of heroes, and I want very much to acknowledge another hero, and I'm waiting for the chief to look at me because I want you to come on forward now, and also bring up Tank. We received information that one of our K-9 officers who served the Town of Southington for many, many years, and the chief is gonna give a little bit of background, who was with Officer Mahan, Man, Officer Mahin, Mahin?
Yes.
Close enough? Am I close enough?
Right.
Okay. And he has passed away, and he served our town so well. And, you know, one of the things about K-9 officers, they are in fact officers, and there's a special monument and dedicated space at the Southington Police Department where they've made a monument for K-9 officers that have died in the line of duty. So I felt it was important that we acknowledge Arno. That's his picture over there. We have a couple of pictures over there with his handler. And Chief, would you give us a little rundown? And here we have Tank, who's having a great time.
I'm paying attention.
That's okay. Hey, buddy, he heard my, heard his name, yeah.
Is that a lacrosse ball?
Thank you very much for allowing us to speak tonight on behalf of Arno. And just a quick overview, it won't take much of your time. Our program started in 2001, and it started with Officer Mahan and with K-9 Gaston. As our units progressed, we ended up having three K-9 units that do their regular patrol duties, and they partner up, K-9 and handler. We've had six units, three at a time, over the last 19 years. Arno joined the ranks of our police department in 2010. Gaston retired. Johnny Mahan then got Arno and stayed as a handler. They served the town faithfully from 2010 till 2019 of December when they both retired, and then Arno passed away this past Saturday, and he'll be greatly missed, but from what John said, he was in Florida. He was in the weeds, looking at a lake, and when John went out to see him, he had passed away, so it was peaceful, and he deserved, he didn't get to enjoy retirement as much as we would like to, but nonetheless, we will miss him. One of the stories I want to share with you, because it is a unique bond between a K-9 handler and a K-9. In 2015, Arno and Johnny Mahan were presented with the Connecticut Police Work Dog Association's Tracking Award of the Year. It was winter, and the Target store got burglarized.
Oh, I remember this.
And it was five degrees, and we had our patrol units and Arno looking for three suspects. The snow was almost waist-deep. They tracked for two and a half hours, and Arno and Johnny found the three suspects. They were subsequently arrested. They linked them to 13 other burglaries of Target stores up and down the East Coast, and then they assisted the FBI in closing two cases as far away as Florida and Texas. So Officer Mahan and Arno's service is forever memorialized in the history of our department. Each K-9 team on the surface, you may say, well, they're just handler and dog, they're similar, but they're very different at the same time. Arno will never forget you. Johnny Mahan, thank you for your service. And it's kind of like a book, you know? You read a chapter, and you understand it, and you enjoy it, and now you go on to the next chapter. And to my left is Officer Neil Ayot and Tank, who's actually taking up Arno's baton. So this is Officer Ayot, and Tank, who graduated today from K-9 school.
Thank you so much for your service. Oh, that's great. Good man, Tank. You know what? I'll tell you, my, there is that bond between the K-9 officer and his handler. I was at a conference one time, they asked me to speak with a panel of women in unusual occupations. I guess unusual occupation. But I was sitting next to a state trooper who had her dog with her, and we got to talk a little bit, and, you know, of course, the dog was very obedient and laid down and was very, waiting for every word. And I said to her, why don't I see more female K-9 officers? And troopers, even. And she smiled, and she said, well, you see this guy? This guy's 100 pounds, and I have to climb 100, I have to climb a 10-foot wall carrying my partner, she said, over the wall in case he ever gets hurt. And so there is that wonderful bond that happens, and so we are so happy that Officer Mahan had Arno and that he served our town so well. And we thank you all for coming, and thank you for bringing Tank, Officer Ayot. Thank you so much for your service.
Thank you.
Very good. Well, okay. Thank you, everybody. Those are two nice moments. I want to get right into council matic communications. Does anyone have anything they'd like to share? Anybody, Chris?
Just along with Vicky, Paul, Jim, and Mike, I had the pleasure of attending the YMCA Annual Dinner, and just like to, first of all, thank the YMCA for the contributions they make to our community. It's amazing the difference they make each and every day, and seeing some of the presentations, especially the outreach program which they highlighted this year. I think it's 25 years of service, so it was great to be able to celebrate the Y with them at their annual meeting, and especially to acknowledge all the people that were honored that evening, especially the Person of the Year this year, which is former Chair of the Board of Education, Brian Growski. So, and it was a pleasure with all of you to be there and represent the town.
Thank you so much. Who else has anything? Yes, Tom?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just wanted to, since we've been talking about Plan B so much this evening, I wanted to thank them for hosting their soft openings over the last couple of days. Myself, Councilwoman DePaolo, and Chairwoman Triano had a lovely dinner on Saturday night. It was, I don't think I've ever seen anything like it. What they did was, for a $10 donation to the Bread for Life for Southington, you got in, you got an entree and one drink. It was just a fantastic gesture from Plan B, and I think the town is lucky to have a partner like Plan B, and I think the residents will enjoy the restaurant. So thank you to Plan B for opening its doors to the council and the community.
Terrific.
And secondly, unfortunately, I will not be at our next meeting, which is two weeks from tonight. I will be out of state, so, thank you.
Thank you for sharing that. Any other things?
Um, you know, rehabbing that building but also respecting the history of the building and tying in some of the, uh, some of the history, uh, of the facility into the new design. Uh, so I wanted to welcome them to Southington.
Great. Excellent. Very good. Anything else? Anybody else?
Madam Chair, I do have something. Um, I don't know if folks know but Southington was stuck with, struck with a tragedy last evening, a fire, um, on East Johnson Avenue. Luckily, nobody was injured but, um, I just, uh, wanted to bring it to everyone's attention that, you know, I saw it on social media this morning that Southington once again comes together for people in need and there were hundreds of posts about people wanting to donate clothes and money and they wanted to know how they could help out this family that lost their home last evening. So, uh, Southington Community Services has taken up the slack. So if anyone wants to donate something, you can go directly through the Southington Community Services if you want to donate money, if you want to donate, um, gift certificates to local delis or sandwich shops, just to try to help the family out in these really difficult times. So, it just, uh, it's an amazing, what a great community we live in to see everyone. They were actually duplicating items so they had to put a stop to it saying, we love everyone donating but let's go through, let's funnel this through one organization so we don't, uh, you know, um, over duplicate donations. So, really, really good stuff.
And the house was completely destroyed.
It was. Very sad.
So it is very sad and so thank you, everybody whose heart is to do good and want to make a donation or donate a gift card or some clothing. So that's good. Thank you. Anybody else? I want to just mention one thing and, um, uh, there, we are exploring right now some, uh, changes to our dog park and, um, you know, it's, uh, it's really in a water way and we're hoping to be able to make some simple changes so that people from Southington will be able to use it and their, their animals, their dogs will enjoy it. And, uh, so more to come on that. I don't want to get too far ahead of it because we're just beginning to talk about it. I know, um, uh, Councilwoman DiPaolo and myself both serve, uh, as friends of the, uh, Dog Pound and we've talked about the wellness and the, the, what can we do for, uh, animals in, in our town and stuff. So this is kind of a nice thing as we begin this process. I'm hoping that, uh, uh, it'll be quick and I hope we get it finished. So, uh, more to come on that. Anybody else?
We missed an opportunity, Madam Chair. Tank was here. We could've asked him for some input.
We could've. I think Tank took enough time. Uh, very good. Um, reports on Special Committee. The first one is Open Space.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And, uh, to Jim and Chris, if I miss anything, please feel free to, uh, to add in. Uh, a couple items. First, we, we do have, uh, some irons in the fire on, uh, and on land acquisitions. So-
Can you all hear? Paul, I think you have to get a little closer to your-
Right into that microphone.
Good news there. Um, we're very happy, uh, on the previously announced state grant for the purchase of a couple parcels of Open Space in town, uh, from the state of Connecticut. So we're happy to receive that grant. And, uh, at our last meeting, um, a couple other things. We talked, we talked about Farm Heritage and the strategies, um, that were, uh, developed under Farm Heritage. Chris brought, um, those to the, uh, to the meeting and the one thing that we'll be asking the council, uh, in coming meetings is to, um, we will, we will provide a, a copy of the Pleasant View Strategy that, which is the, uh, farm area located next to DiPaolo and we'll be asking the Commission to take that up in a meeting, in the next couple of meetings hopefully, uh, to formally adopt that as a formal strategy and plan for that site.
That's wonderful.
The only thing is it's, it's, it was officially referred to as a master plan.
Yes.
If you remember, we hired Malone and McBroom to, to do that work. It was linked with Pleasant Street and the Grouski property. So, in light of the conversations that we had at the council level, which is the previous council, and at Open Space, we thought we'd separate it right now and just move forward at least currently with Pleasant Street and then we can talk about Grouski at a later time.
It's great and I think, uh, uh, Chris, that, we know how much you've been doing to help Farm Heritage too along the way and so that's excellent, Paul. Thank you so much.
And the last thing is we are having a, our next Open Space meeting, for those in the public, our next Open Space meeting will be onsite, weather permitting of course, at the LEAF facility, um, so that we, uh, can conduct our business there but also have the opportunity for the entire committee to see the, uh, the LEAF facility and the program there as we talk about how important that is in our community for the future.
Let's make sure the announcement states that. So if anybody's interested, they'll see it right on the announcement. Very good.
Excuse me, Madam Chair. Can I just, do you know the date on that, Paul? Your next meeting?
Um, third-
Wednesday.
Wednesday. Third Wednesday. I'll, I'll provide that to you.
Okay, thank you.
Great. Um, Public Works, Mike?
Uh, thank you, Madam Chair. Brief update from our meeting of last Wednesday, uh, February 5th. We did get, we were a lot, very fortunate to get Annette to give the Street Scan presentation, which I guess she'll give it again tonight. So we'll be able to see it here. Uh, we spoke about the Plansville, um, the downtown Plansville Safety Improvements and, uh, hopefully this week or next week, we should be getting, uh, the 90% plans. The consultant will be sending, sending that to us. So, and these plans will also include, uh, bid specifications as well. Um, Councilor Pulis had some questions about the corner piece of West Main Street and Route 10 and he said he would be willing to reach out to possibly the family to try to come up with a collaborative way to kinda spruce up that corner. So we're hoping he's gonna follow through with that. I'm sure he will. Um, and then we spoke about Carter Lane sidewalks. There was a proposal to possibly put in some sidewalks for Carter Lane and our process is to send property owners out letters and, um, they did send out 35 different letters to property owners and they did receive 29 noes. So later in our meeting, we did vote, uh, not to put sidewalks on Carter Lane.
Can I, can I ask a quick question?
Sure.
Of the chairman. The six, what is it, the six, were those no responses or they were no responses?
29, no, I'm sorry. 29 responded and their response was no. Sorry.
The other six were not responses.
That's right. That's correct. Correct. Thank you for that clarification, uh, Mr. Lombardi. Um, and the Subcommittee also voted 7-0 to recommend the $10 million road bond referendum to the Town Council, which we're gonna take up later tonight as well. Any questions? Great. Thank you.
Okay, great. Um, the Ordnance Committee, Bill?
Sure. Uh, we met briefly, uh, last week. We talked about two items. The first is the, uh, ordinance that's on for action tonight. Committee gave a favorable recommendation. The second ordinance we discussed related to a, essentially a licensing of signage and that's not on. Um, there's been no public hearing scheduled for that. Uh, my impression is that the next time we meet, we'll have some more questions and perhaps we'll set that down for a public hearing.
Great. Thank you. Any questions of the Ordnance Committee? Very good. Um, Town Manager's report.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, the first item I have is the police, uh, retirement benefits. Uh, let me just give a brief history. Uh, many years ago, before the police were in what's called the MERS system, which is the, the state retirement system for municipal employees, uh, the Town of Southington actually had its own, uh, retirement policy. It had its own fund and every few years or every few, uh, sometimes every few months, we'd have to come to the council and see where we currently stood and had to put money into the fund or in good years, we obviously didn't have the money in the fund. Uh, many years ago, the council chose, uh, to, with the Board of Finance's assistance, chose to move all those, uh, people into annuities. Uh, so we did all that. So they're not part of the, uh, we do not have a, a private retirement fund anymore. But we do have as an obligation every three years to do a COLA for the people that are currently on this plan. So, uh, Hooker and Holcomb, which is a, an agency that does our, our auditing for us and, uh, they give us a number every three years for the COLA. So in this particular case, I budget obviously preparing for this every, every year. So, uh, they're stating that we need $7,031.13 per month, uh, which is already budgeted for the, for this fiscal year for the retirees. Um, this fund, uh, obviously is going to timeout eventually, um, but, uh, in this particular case, the number gets a little bit lower because it's gonna timeout eventually. Uh, so, um, I'm asking for your, uh, permission to move forward with that and do the COLAs for all the retirees. Questions?
Anybody have any questions on that?
Mark, just a quick, very quick question. So if it's every three years, the, the increase is only every three years?
We, we work it out for the three-year period.
For three, so it's spread out over the three years?
Exactly. So Hooker and Holcomb does that for us. So we, uh, we handle it at that point.
Okay.
Very good.
Uh, the second item I have is, uh, Mr. Del Santo just mentioned, is that as you know, uh, last year, uh, the council appropriated money so we can do a road and bridge study. The reason why is because we wanted to make sure they were able to put a, a computer program together. So when we went to the public and asked them every four years to do a $10 million road, uh, bond, we could tell them exactly where the money's going, what roads are gonna be, uh, serviced by that particular bond by spending approximately two and a half million dollars a year, every year. Uh, I can't mention enough that the, uh, the biggest problem this town has is not keeping their infrastructure up. So this would put it in the position, and this is obviously, uh, the last three councils have all, uh, accepted this and I think it's a great idea that we, uh, we move forward. We start with the $10 million bond. We have the computer program in place and, and that's gonna explain that to you. There's one aspect of it, like all computer programs, you still have to have human eyes on it after the computer program, it spits out roads and what has to be done, but we still have to have some human eyes on it too. But, uh, we, Superintendent Turnquist.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Annette Turnquist. I'm the Superintendent of Highway Parks. This is not what I'm seeing on my computer screen. So hopefully we can fix that. I got it, Mark.
Got it?
Yeah, it's, it was over here, not anything you did. Okay, now we can see it. All right. So as Mark mentioned, we hired a company called Street Scan. Um, they came out in the fall and they did a road assessment. They went through every mile of road we have in Southington and based on their findings, each road segment is assigned a PCI between 0 and 100. PCI stands for Pavement Condition Index and 0 would be the worst, 100 would be the best. Um, you probably can't read it from there, but over here, there's a legend and these basically give you the PCI ranges. Um, 0 to 100 is failed, 10 to 25 is serious, 25 to 40 is very poor, 40 to 55 is poor, 55 to 70 fair, 70, 85 good, and 85 to 100 is excellent. Um, and it's color-coded as you can see, um, you know, according to the legend here in this, our map of Southington. Um, what we found was the average PCI is a 76. Um, this is in the good category, which was higher than I was expecting. So I was pleasantly surprised. Uh, we have many roads in the excellent category, but we also have some as low as in the 30s. Um, so we know where we stand. We have this great database. Now what do we do with all this information? Well, along with this Street Scan program, they have, um, this computer program called Street Logix and I'm gonna show you just a few things on it. The first thing I want to point out on the program is that they have this decision tree, they call it. Okay. And what this does is you can, let me scroll down. You can put in different pavement treatments such as full-depth reconstruction, mill and overlay, um, preventive maintenance. Um, this is kinda just what was loaded into the program, but this can all be manipulated. You also put in the PCI range for each treatment. So say between, it's color-coded again. This has between 48, a PCI of 48 and 58 would be a four-inch mill and overlay. And again, this is all customizable. You're also able to put in the unit cost for each treatment. As you can see here, we have an overlay being $8, mill and overlay two inches, $25 a square yard. And again, you know, this is all, we can enter in whatever information we want. Another thing you're able to do is you can weight the functional class versus the PCI. For this particular situation, they're both weighted equally. They're both weighted as fives. Again, something we can change. The next part of the program, I just want to make you aware of, is the budgeting. This is a very handy tool. Here, you can put in the duration of the program you want to consider. So I've been running various scenarios, um, with the program. I've been doing a five-year program. You can, you have the option to filter the information. For example, you could look at one treatment option. If you only wanted to look at the roads, you were gonna, full-depth reconstruction, you can do that. There's other options too. But I've been looking at all the roads. So I haven't filtered anything. And then you can put in your annual budget. Um, up above, I did the five-year duration. So you can put in any numbers you want here.
Well, not any number you want.
Well, not any, well, it'd be nice if I could put in any numbers I want, but I've been going with $2 million in the first year and $2.5 million for all the years afterwards, two through five. Let me just get those in there. Oh, 25 million. That'd be nice. I shorted myself.
25 million.
Ugh. What the heck. Two, five, zero. There we go. I know.
Who's counting?
Yeah. All right. So we can apply that and then, you know, whatever information you put in here, you execute it. And basically what that does is it gives you, um, your program for those five years and it lays out the program that will give you the biggest bang for your buck, meaning it'll have the biggest effect on the PCI using the funds that we have available. Um, and, and just so you know, like this shows you the, the five years and they're color-coded, but I do have the ability to manipulate this. So if there was say like 100 feet of road planned for year one and on that same street, you're doing the next 100 feet in year two, I can move them into the same year so that it makes sense. So as Mark said, you have to have, you know, some human eyes on what the program is doing. So I do have the ability to manipulate things like that. Um, now, in the past, there have been years where we've done about 17 miles of road. Um, but in those years, you know, 15 of those miles were like a preventive maintenance, like a chip seal or an overlay, something in that. And our theory was that we would do a little bit in each treatment category and I do think that's a good theory eventually. I don't think we're quite there yet. Um, in all the scenarios I've run so far, and I've done a lot of them, the recommendation seems to concentrate on the worst roads first. And if you could think about it, it kinda makes sense. If you, if you're bringing a road that's currently a 33 up to 100, that's gonna have a much more profound effect on the average PCI than if you're overlaying a road that already has a PCI between 71 and 80. Unfortunately, um, anything below a 50 is a full-depth reconstruction and those are of course, our most expensive projects. So you might only end up doing five miles each year for a little while. Um, but I think it's important. I agree with the program that we start with the roads that have been neglected and are in the worst shape. We'll eventually get to a place where we can do more preventive maintenance, like a chip seal or a one-inch overlay, but I just don't think we're there yet. Uh, maybe a road or two each year, but it certainly won't be the majority. Um, as I've mentioned, I've been working with the $2 million to $2.5 million budget. Hopefully we'll have more to put in that with Town Aid Road and Loosa Funds. Um, and just so you're aware, a budget of this magnitude really just stops the bleeding. It maintains the current average PCI. It may even go down a point or two, but you're still in the good range, which really isn't a bad place to be. You know, it's 76, that's, that's a pretty good average PCI. Um, and it all depends on what your goal is. You know, a $10 million referendum is, is a fantastic start. You know, but if your goal is to improve upon the average PCI, then, you know, it may take more than two and a half or three and a half million per year. Um, you know, maybe consider doing the referendum sooner than four years from now, the second one. Um, it's going to be a slow, steady, ongoing process and we need continuous maintenance. Um, Street Logix, just to let you know, I don't know if you noticed back on the first screen, but it has our backlog at about $30 million. But even if we had endless funds and I could put any number I wanted in that little budget menu, um, you can't really just throw $30 million at it, wash your hands and think you're done. Uh, roads deteriorate over time. So it's always gonna be, you know, an ongoing process. We have to be committed to the continuous maintenance. Um, and just one other thing I wanted to mention about the program because I think it's important that you know, like what this thing can do. Um, we can update the information. So as we do projects this summer, we can put that in here and it updates the PCI for that road segment. It recalculates the average PCI and, uh, Street Scan recommended that we reassess the roads in the field maybe every three to four years, but in the meantime, we can put in what we've done and it'll update the information. And all these tables too, when you do like the, the five-year scenario or however many years, it gives you a, it gives you the information in table form too. And anything in here can be downloaded into Excel and manipulated. So, I mean, I, uh, thank you for approving this because I think it's a fantastic tool.
Looks great.
Does anyone have any questions?
I do. Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Annette, for the presentation. I have, um, one question and one, um, request. The, the, the question I have is that I'm looking at this, this, um, it looks like an online browser. Is this like a cloud-based software or is it a software that we have in-house now and are there any annual fees on that? That's the question. The second one is I think it's important because, you know, I know I spoke to the Town Manager about it, but specifically for the public and the new council members, I think it's important to explain the ration-
it gives you, it gives you the information in table form too, and anything in here can be downloaded into Excel and manipulated, so, I mean, I, thank you for approving this, because I think it's a fantastic tool.
Looks great.
Does anyone have any questions?
I do.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Annette, for the presentation. I have one question and one request. The question I have is that, I'm looking at this, it looks like an online browser, is this like a cloud-based software? Or is it a software that we have in-house now, and are there any annual fees on that? That's the question. The second one is, I think it's important, because, you know, I know I spoke to the town manager about it, but specifically for the public and the new council members, I think it's important to explain the rationale behind spending the money for this investment. I can't remember the dollar amount, somewhere between $30,000 or $40,000?
For this program and the software?
Yeah.
It was...
That's the end of my question, so just explain the rationale behind purchasing this, and I guess, just a question and observation about the software platform.
It is cloud-based. Our initial purchase was, I think, between $45,000 and $46,000.
I think it was $48,000.
$48,000. I think we got an extra add-on for that.
Yeah.
It was, that included their assessment and the program. I'm honestly not sure if there's an annual fee, but I can look into that for you. Oh, your other question, it was like $45,000, $46,000. I didn't think it was $48,000, but somewhere around there.
We did an add-on, but anyway.
Yeah.
Yeah, and I think I was getting at is that, you know, the decision to purchase it was made for certain reasons, you know, having that third party look at the roads. Our current staff doesn't have the capacity, so we kind of wanted an outside source to do it.
Yeah, I mean, if you're going to invest $10 million, spending $48,000, you know, it's definitely well worth it to get a tool like this, because it helps you prioritize what we should be doing first, and also, the way they assess the roads is, it was actually kind of cool. They have a vehicle that comes out, and it has cameras facing the road, and it picks up all kinds of deficiencies that, if you're doing it by, you know, a human walking the road, you might not pick up every little thing.
Right. Thank you. I have a question.
Yes.
Please.
I like the software, I think it's great. One of the questions I have is, is there a way for that software to look at the average trips per day or the usage of the segment? In other words, if you have a main road that's a 50, and you have a bunch of side roads that carry four cars a day that are 10s, it wouldn't really make sense to do those 10s right away, because the majority of your traffic is on another road. So is there a way to scale the volume of traffic, or is it strictly just the condition of the road?
There is. You can, as I mentioned, you can weight the PCI and the functional class, and the functional class is whether it's a local road or a major collector. So you could bump up the importance of the functional class compared to the PCI. The only problem in doing that is we have so many roads in town that are local roads that have been neglected for so long that they're only getting worse, and the projects are only getting more expensive to do.
Sure, but again, I think, as a budgetary exercise, you put the bulk of your budget where it's going to do the most benefit, and then you can fix some of those neglected roads. I mean, I think that's why they've been neglected, because they weren't that much of a priority. So it'd be nice to have a more professional tool that would say, you know, we can even it out, we can do a couple of those, and we'll do this one main road.
Right.
And then, do they charge you for, do they upgrade this? I think you said every three years, or is there any kind of like reoccurring upgrading fees?
I'm not sure if there's a fee for the software every year, but I can look into, I don't recall one off the top of my head, but the bulk of what, of that $48,000 was for them to come out and do their assessment, and they recommend that that be done every three to four years.
Right, okay. So the data you have is three years old, basically, or it's, it will be three years old?
Eventually, but it'll be updated at the end of each construction season with the projects we did that year.
With your improvements, correct.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Yep, sure.
Yeah. I think, I think, just adding on to your comment, the great thing is that you can now model, you can model the different types of roads, right, and see where your spend goes. So if you wanted to run some scenarios and see how many miles could you get if you made major collectors a priority versus, you know, local roads, and maybe over time, you'll also see what the, the next time you scan, if you had a road that was a local road and it was a 50, and you scanned it again and it was a 50 again, five years from now, you might get some ideas as to the rate at which some of these are degradating, so you could see the difference, I guess, from one scan to another, on the roads that you didn't do.
It was interesting to even go back and look, one of the things I did in Excel was I put in the projects that we did over the last three or four years, just to see what those PCIs came out to be, and they're pretty good, so we did a good job.
And I'm not sure if you mentioned it, but I think one of the goals is to have some transparency for the public to see what the priorities are at some point as well. Not necessarily be manipulating the live tool, but maybe a static snapshot year by year that says, hey, here's the, you know, all things, if everything goes as planned, here's what folks can expect can be done with the funds for the next year.
Yeah, I mean, I don't see why we couldn't post the list so they could at least know what the PCI of their road is, and then every year, once we set which roads we're going to do for that season, we do usually post a list online.
That's great.
Any other questions? Yeah, Val, did you have your hand up?
Annette, thank you. That's an excellent presentation, and I do like the program also. I guess just the question you had mentioned, what is the percentage that are, that's under 50 PCI?
I don't know the percentage. I can look at the list and check it out for you and see.
Is it, is it large? Is it...
No, here, let me grab the list.
While Annette's doing that, I just, I don't want the public to think that the town of Southington, assuming the bond passes, is going to spend $2.5 million a year and that's it. That's our base. We have additional funds that need to be spent too. There'll be money in a budget, there's TAR and LoSiP money from the state, so that's a guaranteed base that we have to work off of, so you don't have the budgetary impacts on major road projects, because we already work on a base, so we'll be spending more than $2.5 million here on roads.
That's great. And Madam Chair, if I can, does this also exclude things like small repairs, you know, potholes, things like that? This doesn't deal with that.
This is not that, no.
We don't want people to think that if you have a small repair somewhere, it's not going to get done.
This does not include, this does not include crack seal, which you see all throughout the town, and this does not include the potholes and the question of light drainage, as major drainage, of course, is going to cover, but light drainage it won't, but the...
And bridges, because we know that's...
Well, bridges, bridges are part of the, this program doesn't.
It's not part of the scanning program, but it's part of the...
Correct, but it's part of the bond.
Yes, exactly.
The good thing about bridges, well, good thing, the good thing about bridges is that the state and federal government do contribute a good portion of those repairs.
That's great.
Thanks.
Okay, thank you, Annette. Thank you so much. Oh, did somebody else have a question?
There are about, there are about 30 roads that are 50 or below. They're all local roads. Yeah, not terrible.
Not too bad.
No.
Okay. Thank you, Annette.
Thank you.
Anybody else last call? Thank you so much. Mark?
Madam Chair, the next item I have is the actual introduction of the bond ordinance, and since bond council require me to read it, I will read it. This is a bond ordinance appropriating $10 million for the costs related to the 2020-21 road and bridge improvement program, and authorizing the issuance of $10 million bonds and notes to finance the appropriation. So let me explain how a bond works that's over $1 million. When a bond over $1 million requires several different steps. The first one is the manager must introduce it to the council, which we're going to be doing tonight. The council then has to take affirmative steps to move forward. You'll see that during your action part. The three big steps are, you have to refer to the Planning and Zoning Commission under 824, which the town attorney will explain. The other one is you refer to the Board of Finance, for them to have a public hearing and give them, then they give you, then your recommendation. And finally, you need a public hearing. The public hearing, assuming you vote yes at the public hearing, which will take place at your next meeting, that doesn't mean it passes. That means all the administrative stuff is set up, and then it does not pass until you receive the affirmative vote of the public, which would be this November. Any questions on that?
Mark, I'm sorry, is, so is there a deadline for putting it on the referendum? This all has to be done?
Yes, what we're trying to do is, we're trying, you have, you're more than likely going to have two separate questions this fall, so we're trying to get this question through, and then you'll start the next process of your next question, which would be a different issue. With that in mind, the next, the next item I have is sewer equity, and actually, I'm going to have the town attorney explain what sewer equity is, and then I'll explain what the request is.
Thank you.
All right, when a, basically sewer equity is, when a developer is trying to extend sewer system into a subdivision, he's not required to expend any more money that doesn't take the sewer system into the subdivision, so benefiting anybody else. So if somebody does, along that line, somebody does want a, resident wants to tap into the sewer, he is going to get, for the first 20 years, he retains equity rights, he's going to get reimbursement for any of those costs of hooking up that additional resident that's not part of the sewer system that he has paid for. After the 20 years, that equity reverts back to the town, so the town would be the benefit of anybody who is looking to hook up into that sewer system.
Thank you, town attorney. The reason why you guys have to act on this is you're also the sewer board, so by charter, you're not only the town council, but you also have the esteemed post of being the sewer board. The sewer board is required to take sewer equity claims. My understanding from the town engineers is that this sewer equity could affect two current residences, so if, as the town attorney mentioned, if they tap in within a 20-year period, then the money is collected by the town and given to the developer. If it's after the 20-year period, the town collects the money and puts it in its own sewer fund.
Yeah. Any questions?
Questions on that?
Great.
The next item I have is the budget update. Obviously, I've sent you numerous emails over the last several weeks. We have some excellent news when it comes to the grand list. 2.18% is a fabulous job by everyone, and I won't go through the whole list again, I sent you emails thanking everybody, but really, the town works as a team. The three, the three boards that have to do with the development aspects of it, which is planning and zoning, this board and the Board of Finance, great job, obviously, we came to you with certain programs, and I don't think we've ever even had an issue with those, they were just a pass by all the boards. So in this particular case, my staff deserves a lot of credit, these boards, the elected officials deserve a lot of credit, but to put in raw numbers what this really means, and this is, this is a baffling number, is that the town of Southington will collect $2,721,650 in additional taxes without raising the mill rate at all. So that is, that is a great buffer for the Board of Finance to say, when they start looking at the BOE budget and my budget, they're already ahead of the game by that number. That's not to say taxes aren't going to go up, but what that happens is, is that'll certainly look at it and will diffuse the, what increase there will be. So when you have a grand list like this, and I, and I think that by reading the, and I encourage all of you to read the documentation that Mrs. Babin put on there, this is not something, we expect some good news for the next few years, because there's a lot of things going on. So obviously, the development team, the town boards, I can't thank them enough, and I think it puts us in a good position to start the budget process with the Board of Finance. The second part of it is the governor's budget. We were told, and I think I told you all before, that the information I was getting from Harford is that we're not going to get hurt, and we didn't. There is a net increase to the town of Southington of about $277,000. The BOE will receive a direct shot of $10,000, and the town, assuming the governor does do his bonding, the town will receive an additional $267,000. So obviously, it's not firework material, but the bottom line is, we didn't get hurt and we're getting a little extra more, extra money. So I think overall, we're in good position for the Board of Finance to start their work, which will take place with our first workshop starting this Wednesday. The workshop with the, with the Board of Ed is this Wednesday.
Mark, would you please extend our thanks for their hard work to our department heads and to each of the departments that worked so very hard to maintain that, and it is certainly very good news, and so...
Well, I know, I know you probably don't know this, but the chair came to our department head meeting and was very complimentary of all our department heads and the work that they do, and I know everyone was very appreciative of that, Madam Chair, so...
Oh, that's very kind.
And I know you said it to them at that point, but I will certainly carry the...
But you know, they're the folks that work so hard behind the scenes. They're the ones that are cordial when they don't, when someone who's difficult walks into the office. They're the ones that stay late and get their job done, and so we're, we're all just very thankful for them, and we're very happy with the news of the, the increase with the grand list. It's wonderful. Thank you.
That's all I have tonight, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Town Attorney's report.
All right, so just briefly, I want to touch on what the town manager said about the process for the road and bridge ordinance. Under Connecticut statute 8-24, that governs municipal improvements, the town cannot act on this bond until it's referred to the Planning and Zoning Commission. The Planning and Zoning Commission will make sure that it fits in with their overall plan and conservation, and then they will either approve or disapprove of this proposal and send it back. They have to act within 35 days, or this, it will be automatically approved.
Very good. Any questions on the process? Okay, great. Thank you. Anything else, Attorney Taylor?
Nothing more, Madam Chair. Thank you.
Thank you so much. We're moving into public communication. If anyone wishes to address the council, now is the time. You'll have five minutes, and we ask you to identify yourself and give us your address, and let's go.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm Pamela DePaolo, 54 De La Huntee Drive in Southington, and president of DePaolo's Furniture on Center Street. On June 24th of 2019, I presented a petition to the town council regarding a new Saturday event, which was held on Father's Day weekend in, in June of 2019, in which closed off all of the parking on Center Street, South Center Street, and Apple Alley, removing 50 parking spaces from these entire areas and causing a disruption of business for at least 13 downtown business owners. And I do have a copy of this petition that I presented at that time to the previous town council, and the reason that I'm here tonight is we have a new town council. And I know that Chris Palmieri had taken an interest in helping me with this at one point, and I want to thank him for his interest in that, and I know also that Lou Perillo, he had assigned him to start checking in the downtown to start a discussion about this subject. So I will give this to you in a moment also. So from 8:30 a.m. to 3 o'clock p.m., which are prime Saturday business hours, these businesses lost customers because their access to critical public parking was cut off and, and removed. The downtown merchants of Southington were given approval to conduct this event without any notice from anyone to request input from downtown business owners and property owners, many of whom are not necessarily downtown merchant members. As a result of the absence of any formal procedure or protocol to require organizations to approach either the town council or a committee approved by the town council to hold such events, these businesses, including ours, suffered a complete loss that Saturday. As I requested on June 24th of 2019, town council meeting, I am representing my petition at this time to request, respectfully request the town of Southington to develop a comprehensive and more detailed procedure to allow, to require organizations requesting to hold new events, to have a better system and of notifying the downtown businesses so that we're not taken totally by surprise, which is what happened last year. So my reason for being here tonight is to advise and to make aware the new town council members who might, may not be informed of this at all. We already have numerous public events in the center of town, and they are well-established as we know, and they're well-accepted, and they're positive community events. We have the Apple Harvest Festival, the Italian Festival, the Concerts on the Green, the Farmer's Market, and the Christmas Event. With the exception of the Apple Harvest Festival, the other events are at least limited to an evening event, such as the Christmas Event, or they're restricted only to part of Center Street or Apple Alley, such as the Concerts on the Green, for example. So they really don't have any sort of a severe impact. The Italian Festival is held on the lower end of Center Street, so the upper end of Center Street and all the spaces on Apple Alley and so forth are still retained. So however, the removal of all downtown parking on a Saturday during critical business hours during the day was very detrimental to many businesses. What I'd like to suggest and, you know, ask you, is there some way that a discussion can be started about alternative locations to be studied? And I'm really talking about future new events, because obviously, as the town grows, people are going to want to have more community events, and the center of town is always a target for that. It's like, oh, let's have it in Center Street, let's have it in the downtown. Great idea, but unfortunately, a lot of times, then the police department is going to say, well, we have to have public safety, now we have to take all the parking off the street. And of course, now, that's affecting the jobs. So the financial impact of adding new public events and at the same time, taking away all the parking is hurting many businesses and preventing them from conducting their normal business operations. So please, I'd ask you to please consider, take up this subject as soon as you possibly can, to create and, you know, study a better system of approving how events are supported in the downtown, but retaining parking for bricks and mortar stores and people who are, whose jobs really depend on those. And there really, there are so many more businesses in the downtown and so many more in the downtown, and so many more jobs where these young people, many of whom are my employees, and they do rely on these jobs. So if there's a way to do some better planning, to improve the parking in the center, to allow for better turnover under normal business conditions, when new public events are proposed, they can, when these, when this happens, when parking is removed, they can disrupt the ability of normal traffic flow, and they do affect people's jobs. So I would ask you respectfully, if you could take some steps to try to think of some better ways to do this, so everything can coexist, and I know the police department has been wonderful to, whenever I call them and ask them to help us with the parking situation, Chris, Bill Palmieri and the police chief, they've just been wonderful. So I do have to thank the police department wholeheartedly for their cooperation, and they, they're very responsive to our questions about parking, on the street parking, and as you know, there's only one side of the street parking too, on Center Street. So thank you for your attention, I really appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you.
We appreciate it. Yes, why don't you give a write to the clerk, and we'll make sure it's in our, in our packet? Thank you so much, Pam. Anybody else? Peter? It's good to see you.
Good evening, Pete Anderson, 1177 Marion Avenue in Marion. I'm a driver in town, I greatly support your improvement to infrastructure, bridges and roges, roads, so I just wanted to make that note. I'm also an avid bicyclist, and there are many roads around town, the local roads, not so much the state roads, that are great for biking, some not so much. I was very intrigued by that street scan tool that I saw up there in the map. I would like, I could see how it'd be very useful to the town. The map itself, not all the bells and whistles for manipulating, but the map itself that shows the road conditions, I would like very much for that to be available online. If it is, that's great, if it isn't, I would ask that somehow it be pointed to. Thank you.
Thank you. That's an interesting thing. Thank you, anybody else, I see you coming up. Hello, Elio.
Good evening to all of you too.
Good evening.
I know the five minutes, Italy, I spend the 10 minutes, five minutes talk, in 40 years, imagine how many minutes I talk. Nothing I find in a minute. I understand. The political system is more bound in, and take care of the honor of the politics, and excuse the citizen. I pay almost $4,5000 long ago. You know, it's an old saying, Italy, I don't know if people understand, "Come nude ma ciado," means, and all you steal from me, when you wanna put a step on. There was a, ever 1916, the town manager, he went around the show, I never had a lot, to the public. I mean, he got a lot of guts, and then, I mean, he got paid and everything, not just him, the other, and he showed I never had a lot. What a job you have! You wanna, so, because of that, I had a thing to, to new people, I had made a copy when I bought a property. I know someone is a lawyer, someone, you know. I wanna say one thing before I figure, the chief police, when he been coming up, nominate, he come after me to the town, and everything else, like I was a cabal, who I don't know. But, they got good money, nobody ever come to me and say, what happened to you? But primarily, I spoke with some counsel, and I say, anyway.
We'll pass him down.
Pass him down.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm alive here, I've been almost 50 years. I know where is, the chairman, the meeting, the beginning, eh...
Thank you.
Never done anything that everybody follow.
Thank you, Elio. Thank you. Grazie.
You're a lawyer.
Thank you.
I think you can put in many, because, you know, there's a lot of lies that go down, I'm not said I'm the best, I'm the person, but when you come to the public, the people that work for their people, they should be very honest, concerned. People pay tax, they say you over there, stood on. I wanna get paid, and I really don't even, because if it was my family, I would be a long time. It's a very dishonest thing. Madame, I know you're here, I remember one time, you said we got a long way, became chairman at that time, then you look into, you know how long that's been this? For you, I'm my shoes, we are, or anybody else. And nobody say anything. I went to his office, and I spoke to him, I say, I know, and I'm talk to you, you worked, that's the council work. I mean, you got well paid to keep the people underneath, just like as there was before wholesale. I couldn't even go to property one day, because I was a danger, not to go to town hall. Who we are here? We are preaching democracy in the world, and here it is, the fine lawyer here, I bring a lesson, my time, the denigo, the law of the rights, so, at that time, the town lawyer, what should be done, to be harmony, and everything fair, nobody done. Because, you know what, that's worse than every, the biggest outlaw. I didn't even put the flag, but that's the way it is, it's the Bible. I wanna get paid, and you don't see me anymore, okay? Because I really, I know you don't wanna see me by all means, but it's a very, very frustrating, 40 years, pay tax, try to be good citizen, no job, I deliver on, I work a mess, I will, I don't matter, and I wanna say something. But it's a very unlawful. But I know you take care of somebody, so you call on the phone and say, this, this gotta be done, okay, we gotta be done there. I become here after years, after years, after years, if I'm a mistake, you're Mr. Dosando. Right?
Yes.
You know my son?
Of course.
Okay. Now, I was here with my son, and Michael Rachel, I'm very surprised, the two times he voted not to, emotional to pay. And then, in the front of my son, he said, your father ever told you what we all done for him? I don't even live in town, when people so dishonest. And then Kamau soon that called the, the police, not to let us, but here it is. One of the, a lawyer from the town, a gentle lady, she came over there one hour at the house, here, he contested the, the law, we are, you are outlaw.
Thank you, thank you, Elio. I know you wanna get paid.
Think I wanna come here and make a show?
Thank you, Elio.
This book I have, I give to you one, see, everything here.
Right.
About the 72, I come to America.
Thank you, Elio. Is there anyone else that wishes to address the council? We'll close public communication, and let's move on. All business, action on public hearing?
That's for the ordinance?
Yes.
Motion to approve.
I'll second that, Madam Chair.
Okay, we have a motion to approve, any discussion?
I would like just to make one comment.
Yeah.
Just recognizing the comment from Mr. Kalkowski, he sent in, you know, he brings up valuable points, I think the Deputy Chief addressed the, the issue with respect to can the police handle it? I'm confident that the town has a plan to get this, I mean, obviously, we'd like to pave it now, but weather is, you know, you're generally not paving this time of the year, so come springtime, I know this is gonna be a top priority for us, so I have a lot of confidence that, that this is gonna be done in a meaningful way, very quickly, and I don't have any concerns.
Thank you so much, anybody else?
Madam Chair, just one thing, I think we have to put in there that the notice has to be in the paper, and that the ordinance can't take in effect till 20 days after that notice.
Thank you so much, let's stick with what we need to do, thank you so much.
Do you need any amendment on the motion, or that was just noted, okay?
Okay, very good. Anybody else have any statements or comments? I, I also, Paul, feel comfortable, the town manager explained that it's, it's ready to go, that we're gonna move on that, the chief explained the due diligence of our, our force, so I'm, I'm comfortable also, so it was good that we addressed those issues. All right, hearing no other further comments, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Hearing none, the motion passes unanimously. Item B, referral to the 824 to planning and zoning for the Road and Bridge Ordinance.
So moved.
So moved, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Val. Any, any comment? Hearing none, I will ask those that are in favor of the referral to signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, that passes unanimously, thank you, everybody. Referral for public hearing to the Board of Finance of the Road and Bridge Ordinance.
So moved, Madam Chair.
Can we have a date, Mark, what are we, we talking about that?
It's this Wednesday.
Okay.
You don't, you don't need it, it's already, it's on their agenda, you don't need to...
Oh, it's on their agenda, okay, very good, thank you so much.
Second.
So Michael, you made the, you made the...
I did, motion.
Motion, do I have a second?
Second.
We have a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Unanimous. Scheduling of a public hearing for the Road, scheduling of a public hearing for the Road and Bridge Ordinance.
This is where you need a date.
Now I need a date, yeah.
My suggestion to you, Madam Chair, is February 24th at 7 o'clock in this room.
I'll make a motion to schedule a public hearing for February 24th at 7:00 p.m. for the public hearing related to the Road and Bridge Ordinance.
Thank you, is there, do I have a, do we have a second? Any, any comments, yeah?
Just a comment, we did make a note that the two commissioners will be out at, at the next meeting, so just for clarification, we don't need the full, the full...
No, but I think it would be appropriate, obviously, if you wanted to give an email to the chair to read, just to see your positions are on the record.
Okay, thank you.
Very good. Hearing that, is there any other discussion? Hearing none, let's take the vote, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? There you go, and the action on the sewer, sewer equity, item number E.
Motion to approve is presented.
Second by Paul, by Paul, right? Second by Paul. Any discussion?
I do, Madam, Madam Chair?
Yeah, sure.
Thank you. I just wanna thank the town attorney and the town manager for explaining this, because it, you know, without people understanding what it is, the, the town is not doing any favors for anyone here, we're not paying for sewers, the developers spending the money to install in the, the sewer line, and as the houses are added, the money goes back to, to the developer. So, overall, I think it's a, it's a good plan, and it's not unique, we've done these in the past several times, so, thank you for...
It's been in the sewer equity, it's been sewer ordinance since the 60s, so yeah.
Wow. So thank you again for the explanation for the public.
Very good. Hearing no other further discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? It passes unanimously, thank you, everybody. New business tax refunds.
Madam Chair, I will make a motion that we approve the tax refunds as outlined in our packet.
I'll second that, Madam Chair.
You have a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you so much, I need a motion to go into adjournment on exec, in an executive session for matters of real estate and personnel.
Madam Chair, Madam Chair, I'll make the motion to go into executive session with the town attorney and the town manager, and there will be no action after executive session.
That's correct.
Second.
Second, thank you, Val. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We'll adjourn into executive session, thank you all.
Think I'd forget about you, Mark?
Sure does me.
Oh, no, I wouldn't mind going home now, but you probably need me in there.